...at 5:00 PM on CSB TV, Channel 20.
And the roll call, please.
Thank you, madam. Commissioner Gottsanker?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Idelson?
Here.
Commissioner Overall?
Here.
Chair Burrows?
Here.
Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda, Status Report. Ms. Black is absent.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. There is today's, of course, agenda. We'll get to that in a while. Moving forward and looking forward, rather, we look forward to the June 27th hearing, where we have potentially the Prescott new single-family dwelling appeal. That's something that we'll have to take up. The specific scheduling of that item will have to take up a little bit later because there's a request for continuance, but not entirely agreement. Also, we may have an appeal of an MBAR approval that has been submitted recently on the Featherhill property. That's all we have on June 27th. On July 25th, Noel Langill will be bringing for your consideration the Special Events Ordinance Amendment, which is something that is of very much relevance and a lot of interest across the county, in Montecito and elsewhere. And in addition, we intend on July 25th to bring the Agricultural Buffer Ordinance forward for your consideration. There isn't a lot of agriculturally zoned land in Montecito where this would apply, but there is some, so we would very much appreciate your input on that ordinance as we move it forward, hopefully for approval to the Board of Supervisors. At this point, August and September are somewhat speculative, so I think that probably I'll stop right there as far as the future agendas are concerned.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now move to public comment. I'm sorry?
Chair Burrows, just a point of clarification. We still are on for June 6th, are we not, for the Highway 101 joint hearing?
Yes. Thank you for reminding me of that, Commissioner Overall. We are on for June 6th. I just didn't see it. It was listed funny.
Thank you, Commissioner Overall, for catching that for us and for the public. We'll now move to public comment. Excuse me. This public comment is for anyone who would like to address the Commission on any item that is not on today's agenda. Do we have any speaker slips?
I didn't submit a slip, but I'd like to speak.
All right. Mr. Mons, would you please fill out a slip before you leave?
Yeah, I'll...
Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Mons.
Go ahead, please.
Good morning. My name is Charles Mons. I'm here just as a member of the public to remind the Commission that on June 22nd last year, you had a briefing by your staff concerning issues that were brought to you by members of the Coral Casino. And at that time, you directed your staff to consider or reconsider the report that it provided to you at that time. You acknowledged that report, but did not accept it. In Ju-- excuse me, in November, November 23rd, the staff was reminded of the pending supplemental report. And as to date, no report has been announced that I'm aware of. I did speak to Diane Black last Friday. She told me that there's some preliminary report that's been completed and that in the near future, that report's going to be made available. So I'm just asking you to be aware of that and to agendize that when that report becomes available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mons. And if you had filled out a speaker slip. Anyone else for an item not on today's agenda? If not, we will move forward to the Planning Commissioners informational reports. Commissioner Gottsanker, please.
No, I don't think I have anything to report.
Mr. Phillips. Mr. Danielson, please.
Just make a comment of something that I think is of interest to everybody, and that is the state has recently passed a ruling that we have to do away with redevelopment districts. And it's been very interesting, a meeting, I've been working on two of them. And we turn in the reports on a regular basis to the state, and they proceed to usually find something wrong with it. And so it's kind of interesting just to follow this whole process. It seems that the state is short of money, just the same way that districts are. And they're trying to get their hands on as much of the money that is in the redevelopment districts.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Overall, please.
The only thing I would comment on is there have been a series, since our last hearing, related to Highway 101, there have been a series of community presentations conducted by the Montecito Association. And I've attended several of them. And the debate goes on, I guess, at this point. But we have the, our last shot at making comments on the draft environmental report on the June 6th. So I think any additional input that we can get from the public before we do that would be a good idea.
Thank you very much. And I have no report at all on the Commissioners informational reports. We'll now move to consideration of the minutes of May 2nd, 2012. Is there a motion from the Commission as to accepting the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We will now move to Dr. Russell's Director's Report, please.
Good morning. My report will be relatively brief. Since your last meeting on the 2nd, there have been three Supervisors meetings that I can report on. On the 8th, and also another item, related item, on the 15th, the Board has now put in place the two-tier retirement system. So anybody hired after a certain date in June will now be hired under the new lower-tier system. So that is in place. On the 15th, we finally heard the many times continued Santa Barbara Ranch consent to transfer approval. And that was the issue of a new company, a new partnership purchasing the land, the project, from the bank. And the Board of Supervisors decided that they did not have enough information to either consent or not consent to the transfer. So they chose not to do anything because of lack of information, because of the way that the inland development agreement is written, that there was a 45-day clock that they had to take action within 45 days. That clock had been stopped during the continuances, but basically that clock expired at the end of that hearing. And so even though they did not take action one way or the other, it is deemed, because of the expiration of the clock and the language in the inland development agreement, the consent is deemed to have taken place. So that transfer is deemed consented to. In addition, we had the Galita Beach contract, the acceptance of the grant and the award of the contract to do the EIR for Galita Beach Version 2, which is one which we hope will be more acceptable to the Coastal Commission certainly, because they didn't accept the first version. And on yesterday, the 22nd, there were a couple of set hearings. And the most interesting item of the day, from my perspective, was the Park Hill Estates in the eastern Galita Valley foothill area, the Park Hill Estates' appeal of the County Planning Commission's determination that an environmental impact report was required, a focused environmental impact report, was required for the project. There was much discussion. It had been continued from an earlier date, so staff could bring back additional information specifically regarding fire safety issues and conditions that had been placed upon projects approved in the past in the vicinity of this project. And Supervisor Wolf had to recuse herself because she lives very near to the project. So the four Supervisors ended up voting 2-2 to require an EIR. So the motion failed, and it sort of leaves us in a little bit of limbo as far as what will happen next with that project. But the requirement for the EIR, the appeal of that requirement, came to a no-action, 2-2 vote. Those are the items that I have for you today on the Director's Report. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you very much. We'll now move to the consent agenda, and please read C1 into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a request of Jeff Havlick, Agent for the Santa Barbara County Public Works Department, to consider case number 12GOV11, application filed on April 19th, 2012, for a determination that vacation of an unused right-of-way burdening a portion of the property located at 932 Park Lane in Montecito is in conformity with the comprehensive plan of the County of Santa Barbara pursuant to Government Code Section 65402A.
Thank you very much. Is there a staff report on this item? Ms. Lou, please.
Chair Burrows, because this is a consent item, I have not prepared a formal staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on the 65402.
Does the Commission have any questions on this item or comments? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. Precious little here. Is it, am I to understand that the property owner has agreed to this and will continue the maintenance on this road and, or this non-road or whatever this is, this area? Is that what happened?
Chair Burrows, Commissioner Phillips, the impetus for the 65402 is because a portion of Park Lane is becoming to be undercut by a culvert that outlets on the property owner's parcel. And he's come in with a plan to help to restore that and revegetate both the area right adjacent to Park Lane all the way down through his property. And in order to do that, he would either need to get permission for road encroachment or would need to obtain the property in this manner. So the request came from the applicant, from the property owner himself, and there is a plan to maintain and revegetate this area in perpetuity. So it would shift from the responsibility of the county to maintain that area and that culvert over to the property owner. And he is the individual who requested this 65402. And Jeff Havlick from Public Works is here, but it's my understanding that Public Works is also supportive of the road right-of-way vacation.
I don't recall us seeing anything like this since we've been in business. Why would a property owner do this? Any sense of that?
Commissioner Phillips, I think I don't see the property owner in the audience, so it'd be difficult to speak for him. But I do know that this is a part of an overall improvement project on his property. And in order to complete the full restoration of the area attached to the culvert in a way that would treat the drainage properly, then this area would need to be a part of the project.
So he has more freedom now to implement his design concept?
Exactly.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we take public comment on this? I suppose not, since we have not had a report. Yes.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, yes, I would recommend that you take public comment. Just call to see if anyone's here to speak.
Thank you. Would anyone here like to speak to this item, like to comment on this item? Yes, please. Would you please go to the podium and please fill out a speaker slip?
You can do it afterwards.
Yes, you can do it afterwards. Thank you. For our records, we like to have those.
Sure. My name is Denise Salick, and I represent the owners at 875 and 885 Park Lane. And I was wondering what the impact is on neighboring properties, if any, of the culvert being possibly cleaned up or redirected.
Ms. Lou.
I believe I can comment on that. So the 65402 is a little bit of a separate action from the land use permit under which the physical development would occur, but I am also the planner for the land use permit. And what that would do was restore a slope adjacent to Park Lane that has started to fail because of undercutting underneath the culvert. So it would restore that, and we have a drainage study that was prepared for us to show that after implementation of the plan, the amount of runoff leaving the property would actually either be the same or less than the amount of runoff currently. And we knew that that might be a concern for neighbors, so that's why we looked into making sure that the runoff is actually, hopefully, being treated better following completion of the project. And there's also provisions for temporary revegetation as it's going on, so there's not a temporary situation, you know, where there is excess sediment or anything like that going offsite.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Any comments or questions from the Commission? If not, do we move forward on this with a motion to accept, to consent to the item? Or is that done by consensus?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, yes, you do it by motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. It passes. We'll now move on to the standard agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I have a small recommendation to make, but of course you can proceed in any manner that you wish. We have two items on the standard agenda. The first item is a standard hearing item with a presentation, a normal item. The second item is actually a request for continuance.
Yes.
On the appeal of the Prescott residence and driveway. We received a request from the Attorney for the Prescott Project to continue the scheduled public hearing for the appeal of the Prescott Project from May 23rd today to June 27th. Now, PND staff has no objections whatsoever to this request. However, the Attorney for the Appellants has indicated that his team is not available for Montecito Planning Commission hearings in June, July, or August. So this kind of presents an issue that we should probably address today. We expect that representatives of the applicant and the appellants are here today. But if you wanted to wait and take this up later, you could, or we might be able to dispense with this quickly first. It's certainly up to the Commission.
Out of respect for those who are here to speak to the item, I would suggest that the Commission move this forward to be considered at this point and the Verizon after the Prescott. Do we have agreement on that?
Aye.
Any objections? If not, then we will go to consent, go to item, item two on the standard agenda, please.
Madam Chair, as I mentioned, we have had a request for continuance, but there is some issue. Our representatives of the applicant and the appellant here today to discuss the request. Your presence.
Let me read that.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
I need to read that into the record.
Well, please read it into the agenda, the item into the agenda, into the Commission report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a request of Fred Cluff, Attorney for the applicants Diane Baskin and Michael McCarthy, to consider the appeals, case numbers 11APL23 and 11APL24, appeals filed on November 8th, 2011, of the decision of the Montecito Board of Architecture Review to grant preliminary approval of case number 08BAR273 and the decision of the Director to approve the land use permit, case number 10LUP109, and to determine that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15303 of the State Guidelines for the Implementation to SEQA.
Thank you very much. We will now move to hear from the appellate. Please state your name for the record, Mr. Cluff.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Fred Cluff. I'm an attorney here representing the appellants, Diane Baskin and Michael McCarthy. They own separate residents and lots that are adjacent to the project. I have no problem with a continuance. The problem is the date. And just to give you a little bit of quick historical background on this project, I filed the appeal of the land use permit issuance and the ABR approval, I think, on the 8th of November. I believe Allen contacted me early January, said they're ready to schedule a hearing in January, which was fine with us, but the applicant had a problem with that date. And then for various reasons, applicant and my team in availability, it wasn't scheduled for hearing until, I think, around the 1st of April, setting it for today. And based upon that, that was in almost two months in advance. I made plans to be in Seattle in June for a family reunion and in Europe the end of August. Mr. McCarthy, specifically to the date requested by the applicant to the continuance, I think it's the 27th of June, has a scheduled appointment with an orthopedist specialist in Denver. And according to Mr. McCarthy, you have to make those appointments several months in advance. So to reschedule would be a significant inconvenience for him. So we're here not to oppose a continuance, but to suggest that if it is continued, we're ready to go forward today, that it be continued to your meeting in September. Also, this project is not one that's been fast-tracked by any means. They submitted their application in March of 2009. It didn't get to the ABR for the first approval until September of 2010, a year and a half later. The BAR made a number of comments, negative comments concerning the driveway, which, of course, is our concern. And it wasn't until the following September, September of 2011, then it got back to the ABR for preliminary plan approval. So I understand a 90-day continuance is not the normal thing. I think under the circumstances, it's the only thing that's appropriate, based upon the outline of the background that I've just provided to you. So I respectfully request that this matter be continued until whatever the date of your September meeting is. Now, one other thing, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I think you should consider, and that is scheduling a site visit before you have your regular hearing on these appeals. And I suggest that because the concerns that my clients have is not the residence itself, it's the 1,100-foot driveway, which has been proposed to access the residence through an oak woodland, removing almost an acre of oak woodland, generating issues with respect to drainage in connection with a natural drainage course which is on the property. And until you actually go on the property and look at it, I don't think you can appreciate it. You know, you have the right to do that under the Brown Act as long as you notice the fact that the Commission's going to do a site visit. I don't know if you've done these in the past, but certainly city councils, other planning commissions with whom I've been involved have done that. And I really suggest that you consider that seriously and do it before you have the formal hearing, because without actually walking the property, looking at the site of this proposed driveway, you can't, I don't believe, adequately appreciate what's being proposed. Thank you, Madam Chair. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Cluff?
Thank you.
If not, we will move. Is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to speak, please?
Madam Chair, fellow Commissioners, we understand the appellants' concerns, and we'd love to meet in June, but we also understand the conflicts with scheduling, so we don't have a problem with the pushing it out.
Thank you, sir. Would you please state your name for the record?
I'm Jeremy Roberts. I'm the representative for the owner, Mr. Piercy.
Thank you so much. Is there any public comment on the issues presented today? If not, is there any other information from the staff? Please.
Madam Chair, I would, pursuant to the first speaker's request for a site visit, of course, you're all well aware that you could accomplish that on an individual basis without any Brown Act issues, so...
The site visits?
Yeah. So that's certainly a...
Yes.
An option and one which might be a little bit less burdensome than actually noticing a hearing out there.
Absolutely. Commissioner Overall, please.
I would just respond to that. I have attempted to visit the site, and I would tell you, it is not absolutely evident on the ground of what the hell you're looking at. And I think for us to do it individually without it being well orchestrated, and for that matter, the public having an opportunity to hear it, I think would be a mistake. I think Mr. Cluff is absolutely right to do adequate justice to this project. I think we need to, we all need to see it, and I would recommend we do it together.
Is that a motion, or would you like to wait until Ms. Black is back and let her try to coordinate site visits?
Well, I think, Madam Chair, that since, if we all do it together, it would fall under the Brown Act. I think it needs to be noticed, and I, you know, I just think we ought to decide whether or not we think that's, you know, a worthy approach. And if we are, I mean, I'm not going to change my mind on it, you all may, but, I mean, that's what I would advocate. So I could make it as a motion, or you can discuss it first, and then we can do it.
All right. Let's please have discussion. Commissioner Gottsanker, please.
Yes, I'm also, I'm a sort of agreement with Commissioner Overall's point of view on this one. I have been on the site and have had conversations with the Chair of MBAR regarding this project. I think it is, this is a project that is being looked at from the community's point of view, you know, and I think it would be really appropriate to schedule a site visit because it is very difficult to deal with individually, you know, trying to even like, kind of find your way through and get there is a problem. But once you get there, there is no way without having materials in front of you that you would know at all what you were, what was going on. So all that said, I would just make a motion that to, that as part of the motion for a continuance, that a site visit be scheduled.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I would second it, and I, the other part of it, I would add that we ought to suggest that we schedule this continuance until September and include the site visit. I think that was what Commissioner Gottsanker was motion.
I wasn't quite sure how it, it needed to be two motions.
I may have butchered it too, but any rate, I second whatever that is.
That's all right. For clarity, then, the motion is that we will continue this item until our September meeting, and that in the interim between now and then, we will ask Director Black or the appropriate county staff to set up a Commission site visit and follow all applicable rules for alerting the public to this. Please.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, if I could just speak to this really quick.
Please.
Commission site visits, it's not something that we normally do. And my hesitation is just that I don't know... And my hesitation is just that I don't know all the coordination that would be involved and all the requirements and the timing of that. So, and I would feel more comfortable knowing all of those requirements and that the commission know everything that's involved and how that would actually take place before the direction is given to do that. I just think it's just a matter of me looking into it a little bit more and coordinating with staff and providing you with that information. It's certainly within the discretion of the commission to make that determination now. I'm just letting you know, I have concerns about just making sure we know everything, exactly what's involved in that decision.
All right.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
Idelson.
Yeah, I kind of think we should separate this and first just pass the continuance, if we want to have a continuance, and then work on the site visit issue later as we approach the date of the hearing, so that if we're going to have a continuance, it's going to go to September, there's adequate time to make these other findings.
All right. Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you. We do site visits all the time, and I don't remember wandering around people's property without a guide or someone pointing things out. Is the point that we want the public to be with us on this? Or is it just to be more efficient? Because we could do it in two groups. And also, what is the burden for the county to have this noticed? Maybe that's the first place. If it's extraordinary, let's talk about it. If not, you know, I can go with the motion.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Phillips, that's exactly the issue that I wanted to look into. I mean, each commissioner certainly has the option of going to the site, coordinating with staff to be there to help you know where to go or to answer questions. So that's one option. When the whole commission goes together, we are subject to Brown Act requirements, including noticing. And I'm just not sure everything that's involved as far as transportation, what our obligations are to the public, how public comment would work in that setting, what, how many staff members need to be there in order for it to be an official meeting. So that's what, that's my hesitation. I just want to make sure.
And there's lunch issues, you know, there's.
I just want to make sure we know everything that's involved before, before we.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Gottsinger, please.
Given that I was, that there is a motion on the table that I was the maker of, I will, at this point, withdraw my motion, allowing a new motion to be put on the table, and we'll go from there. Just loosen up the.
So the motion before us is withdrawn, and we will now start from scratch on this. May I suggest that we, that we have a motion to consider the continuance until September on this item? And then consider the other issues after that date has been decided. So is there a motion, if you're in agreement, is there a motion to continue this item until our September meeting?
So moved, Madam Chair. I second.
Commissioner Phillips? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we are unanimous that this item will be moved to the September meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission. Now, would the commission like to further address the site visit to the, on this application, or would you like to do that at a future meeting?
Let's, let's get it done, huh?
All right. I'm open for discussion, please. Do I have, oh, Commissioner Phillips, please.
Could we just address why this is different than other site visits? The complexity of the site is, has been mentioned. Let me ask it another way. Would it be burdensome for staff and applicant and representatives to individually meet us? Is that too much to ask, or should, do we need smaller teams? Or should we do this together? I mean, it doesn't matter to any of us, I don't think.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips, we could do it either way. If there is, if there's an issue with the site being difficult to navigate or difficult to reconnoiter, we certainly could, on an individual basis, assist in that type of a visit. Staff could do that, being a liaison with the property owner. That's one way to approach it.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Overall, please.
The comment that I would offer is I think it is a complex site. I think there's a lot riding on this particular project in terms of, well, a variety of different aspects. And I think that there's a significant value to us all seeing the same thing and discussing the same thing together. And it's, it's different coming in here after you've been there. And Claire saw one tree, and I didn't see it. We're not necessarily all going to be talking about the same thing, even though we supposedly have all visited the site. So, I mean, I just think that there is some significant value to the quality of the decision that we'll make for us to be there, look at it, be able to ask questions, and benefit from the questions that other commissioners ask. So that's, that's my rationale behind it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on whether this is a site visit for the entire commission, or where individual commissioners are allowed to set up their date and time? Commissioner Gottsinger, please.
Well, once again, I do agree with Mr. Overall's point of view here, and I would just request that, that county council, before we make any, you know, fixed dates about the possibility of a group site visit, that, given county council's concerns, that we, I request that county council and staff come back to us at our next hearing to let us know what their concerns would be, and, you know, and then move forward from there as far as the discussion is concerned. That gives staff, you know, at least, at least a month, if not more, time to actually bring us some sort of report on how to manage this site visit that we would like to do together.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottsinger, if the commission would like to do as you suggest, we would be happy to bring that information back at the next Montecito Planning Commission hearing so that you could make a fully informed decision as to how and when, and exactly what you would like to do regarding your site visit.
All right, thank you. In light of the comments from the commission today, I think that that would be very helpful. So are we in agreement that we would request county council to research this and to come back with us on direction, suggestions, so that we are in compliance with all the rules of the Brown Act? Are we in agreement on that?
Yes.
All right.
Madam Chair.
County Council, please.
Commissioners, I'm happy to work with staff on figuring out how to coordinate that. I'm just trying to think now about whether we want to have this item on next month's agenda if you're wanting to discuss further the site visit issue, but then with the plans of scheduling that, that the actual hearing would be in September. So I'm just trying to figure out the noticing requirements. So if you wouldn't mind just taking a few minutes, if we could take a short break, and I could look at that really quick, just to make sure we get it noticed adequately for the next meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. We're in adjournment for five minutes. Recession. Item number two on the standard agenda. Do we have report from county council?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, so I talked to staff, and I think what the best solution is, is to continue this item to June 6th, your special hearing. And what, so what that would mean is withdrawing your previous motion to continue it to September, continue the item to June 6th, and at which time, we'll be prepared to discuss the logistics and everything that's involved in a site visit, and your commission can decide whether or not you want to schedule that site visit. And at the June 6th hearing, you can also plan to still continue that item to September. But it'll also give you a chance to have the information on the site visit, because you may want to schedule the site visit at a different time and coordinate the hearing time as well, if you're deciding to go forward with the site visit. So the actions are, I would recommend you take, make a motion to withdraw your previous action, vote on that, and then take a second motion to continue this item to June 6th.
Okay. And at the June 6th meeting, we would consider whether or not to continue the item as well as the site, make a decision on the site visit?
Madam Chair, that's correct.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there a motion in light of the ruling, the advice from county council to withdraw our prior motion? Commissioner Idelson, please.
Do we have concurrence of the applicant and the appellant?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Idelson, yes, I'm sorry. That was, part of the time that we took was to talk to both parties to make sure they're available on June 6th. It's my concern with continuance to the next June hearing is that one of the parties already said they weren't available. So that's why we looked at the June 6th date.
All right. Is there a motion to withdraw the prior motion which continued this item to September?
I'd make a motion that we withdraw the item.
The motion?
Yeah, the motion.
All right. Is there a second?
I have no idea why we're doing this, Madam Chair. The continuance and the site visit are two different things, I think, but I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Commissioner Overall? Okay, all right. So it's four, one. We will now move forward for consideration of moving this item in two parts to June 6th. County council, please.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I've just been told by David Villalobos that the June 6th hearing is not a joint hearing. I'm confused by looking at the projection report.
The 101 portion of that is a joint hearing, right?
And that's the only thing we're doing, I think.
That's correct. So I.
We're, this commission is scheduled to hear 101 with the county planning commission on June 6th, according to my records.
I think that's accurate, but I think that that is, that was, it was, the last time we met, we had a hearing separate from, for an hour, dealing with our business. Then we went in to, so I think the confusion here, from what I'm hearing, is that, that the June 6th hearing is only, there will be no opportunity for MPC, for our commission, to be able to deal with our own business, because we are only in a joint hearing together. That's what I'm hearing, anyway, you know. You know, I think that from my, from my point of view, I mean, it, that, that this whole idea of the site visit, you know, I don't need, know that it really, I don't understand the complexity of what's going on with county council, staff, what's going on here. You know, I mean, we've got an item here that we've, that both the applicant and the appellants have agreed to continue to September. That's what we've done. Okay, that, so, that, that motion, in my opinion, should sit on the ground. We've continued to this, this item if we all agree on it. Then, a discussion on how to manage a site visit is completely off, it doesn't have anything to do with that motion that we've now got on the table.
And discretionary, I think.
Yeah, you know, I mean, and so why not move forward with the original motion, which is to continue the item to September? Then, staff and county council can go away and figure out how they're going to manage a site visit between now and September. Is there? I don't see, I don't understand the complexity that's happening right now, but.
I, I think that that is true, but is there any reason why this commission could not meet for half an hour on June 6th, we will all be here for the 101, to decide on the site visit if county council thinks that this needs to be decided by the commission?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I apologize. I just asked Sharon to go and get David Villalobos. I'm trying to just figure out what's been noticed. I'm just trying to make sure we're in compliance with the Brown Act, both for the discussion of the site visit and for noticing for the next hearing. So there seems to be some confusion on what's been noticed for June 6th. So the issue is that if, if the commission wants to have a discussion on this project and whether or not to have a site visit, we need to, to notice that at a hearing. The next, the next three hearings, one of the parties is not available. So that's what we're trying to work out.
My sense of the commission is that we would like a site visit. So I think, it seems to me that what we need to decide is a date that would be applicable and then, that would be okay, and then decide how to make the site visits in compliance with the Brown Act. Is that where we are?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, it's within the discretion of your commission to determine whether or not you want to schedule a site visit. And my original recommendation was, I just wanted your commission to have the full information of what that meant before, before we went forward with that. But of course, if your commission would like to go ahead and schedule that site visit, that's up to the commission. And in that case, it looks like we may be pushing it to that decision until either June 6th or September.
County Council.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, what I would suggest is, perhaps we should just trail this item and actually meet and figure out. I guess, has the commission made a determination, I can't tell from what the commission is saying whether the majority wants to go ahead and have staff figure out the site visit, or if we want to continue that discussion and wait for more information from staff.
Madam Chair, could you just take a sense of the commission?
Did you have, oh, Commissioner Overall?
Could you just take a sense of, of the commission as to whether we would like a site visit or not?
I think, yes. Is there any, does the commission, is the commission in agreement that we want a site visit to this property? Please say aye.
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 Yes.
Unanimous. Yes.
Madam Chair, in a world of seemingly less than ideal selection of options, I want to make you aware of one option. Understanding that one of the parties, apparently, there's, there's an issue with the way that the June 6th hearing has been noticed. So we can, we can look into that further. Or, understanding that we do have consensus from the applicant and the appellant on when they actually like to have the hearing, which is in September, one thing that we might be able to do is continue the, the whole item to the June hearing, the June 26th hearing. Understanding there's one party that can't be here, I believe that there is consensus as to the September hearing. And so even though they might not, they have said that they can't be here, we could continue the entire item to the June 26th and have the decision as to when, if, and how the site visit could take place, as well as the actual formal continuance of the item to the already agreed-upon September hearing.
Madam Chair, could I make a suggestion? Fred Clough again. I suggest you do the following. First of all, renew your motion to continue this to the September meeting of the MPC, which I think is the 27th. Second thing I would do is suggest that you make a motion to schedule a site visit for the week before that, specific date. Go ahead and act on those things. Now, if, if the staff comes back in the interim and, at a subsequent meeting and, you know, expresses problems with site, you can do a site. expresses problems with site, you can do a site visit, absolutely no question. There's some practical problems that understaff is concerned about that, but you can do it. And if five members of the commission want to do it, then let's go ahead and make that decision now. Schedule a time for that the week before, and let's move forward.
Thank you. Does County Council have comments on this suggestion?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, you've had a lot of options thrown at you, but what I have heard from the commission is that, seems to be the majority is the consensus is that you'd like to have a site visit.
Yes.
A scheduled meeting for a site visit. So, I think that, at this point, you could go ahead and either continue the item to June, as Dr. Russell suggested, and have this discussion for when you're going to schedule the next items, or continue the whole item to September, and at that time, we could discuss when to have the site visit.
All right, how would the commission like to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion.
Madam Chair, may I?
Commissioner Obergefell, please.
May I?
Of course, sir, please.
We would really not like to wait to September to make a motion to go do a site visit. We're very open to the site visit prior to the meeting, but to wait till September to decide to then go see the site, to then have to come back for another meeting, that doesn't seem to serve anyone, so.
We're with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Obergefell, please.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the project until September, and to schedule a site visit for the week before.
I'll second that motion.
Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, that item is finished. We will now move on to item one. We'll take a five-minute break, and Commissioner Obergefell will be leaving us. So, thank you. Bye.
Where's he going?
Ms. Foster, would you please read it into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a request of Jay Higgins of SAC Wireless, agent for applicant Verizon Wireless, to consider case number 12CUP7, excuse me, application filed on March 29th, 2012, and to determine that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15301 of the State Guidelines for the Implementation to the California Environmental Equality Act.
Thank you so much. We will now move to the county staff report, please. Ms. Lowry?
Good morning, members of the commission and members of the public. My name is Megan Lowry. I'm the project planner for 12CUP Verizon Wireless facility at the Montecito switch station building. To orient you to the project site, it is an existing switch station building located on Santa Angela Lane, fronting East Valley Road in the Upper Village area of Montecito. The property is Zone 20R1 residential. The combined two parcels equal .87 acres. It is within the Montecito community plan area and is designated as urban inland land. Currently, the property is used as a switch station operation building for Verizon California, which is the landline company. That is to distinguish it from the applicant, who is Verizon Wireless, the cellphone carrier. In 2002, Singular Wireless actually applied to place a cellular facility on the rooftop of the switch station building that was approved and is currently existing on-site. Here are some pictures of the switch station building from East Valley Road, and then looking down Santa Angela Lane. Here's a view into the entrance of the parking lot with the gate open, and then the western property line, as viewed from Santa Angela Lane. Here's the backside or the north side of the building as viewed from inside the parking lot, and just want to point your attention to the top part of the building is actually the existing RF transparent parapet that hides or screens the existing Singular Wireless Here's a view also from inside the parking lot, looking towards the entranceway, and you can see the existing Singular equipment shelter. The proposed project is for Verizon Wireless, the cellphone carrier, and they're proposing to add nine panel antennas also to the rooftop. They would be located behind the existing parapet facade that Singular has constructed. In addition to the panel antennas, they would also propose an equipment shelter that would be located on the side of the parking lot, adjacent to Singular Wireless's existing equipment shelter. The issues involved with these types of applications generally start with aesthetics. In this particular application, the design has screened the antennas behind in the existing parapet wall, using existing infrastructure, and the equipment shelter would be screened in the parking lot area by the existing wall and mature vegetation, so it would not be seen from the side, from the public view on Santa Angela Lane. The next issue area we typically see with telecommunications applications is that of health and safety. These types of facilities must comply with federal communication standards at all times as a licensed wireless carrier. As part of the project application, Verizon Wireless submitted a Hammat and Edison report that analyzed the emissions from the existing facility, the proposed facility, and the emissions combined from both facilities operating simultaneously. The report concluded that the facilities would be at 9.5% of the applicable FCC limit, and therefore would meet the health and safety thresholds of FCC. Lastly, our ordinance directs us also to look at the demonstrated need for service. This is a new finding that was added in the telecommunications ordinance in the last ordinance update in 2011. In this particular case, Verizon Wireless, as part of their application, has explained that they have an existing facility at the QAD property in Summerland on Ortega Hill Ridge Road that is currently being decommissioned. It's an older site that has served the majority of the Montecito area for Verizon Wireless coverage. With the loss of this facility, there would be a void in service for Verizon Wireless in the Montecito area. This proposed facility would serve to fill that void. Here are the coverage maps provided by the applicant as part of their application. This is the coverage that would, for Verizon Wireless without the QAD site. The green is the best service, yellow being the next, and then red and black being no service. The star indicates the proposed location for the new facility, and this would be the increased coverage of the Montecito area with the proposed site. In conclusion, the proposed project co-locates with existing infrastructure. It blends with the existing development and character of the community. It meets the applicable FCC limits for health and safety. It is allowed under the Tier 4 telecommunications facilities with the major conditional use permit approved by your commission, and meets all applicable development standards and policies. With that, staff recommends that your commission make the required findings for approval, including the CEQA findings, determine that the project is exempt under CEQA Guideline Sections 15301 and 15303, and approve the project subject to the conditions. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions or comments of staff's report? Mr. Phillips, please.
Thank you. You pointed out nine antenna, antennae, maybe. Is that all of the additional incremental building coming to the site? I seem to remember something else happening. Kind of an additional building of some sort. Is that true?
Commissioner Phillips, that is true. There's an equipment shelter that's proposed.
Can you talk about that?
Sure. And I'll go back to the slide. It shows a picture of the equipment shelter. So, in addition to the antennas being mounted on the rooftop behind the parapet wall, there would also be an equipment shelter about 192 square feet. It's a prefabricated equipment shelter, similar to the existing Singular Wireless equipment shelter, and that holds the ancillary equipment that supports the antennas on the roof.
And where is that going to be located? Is it outside of the structure with the parapet surrounding? Is it outside of that?
Correct. It is on the eastern property, I'm sorry, western property line, adjacent to the Singular one. I can go back to also, oh, behind the existing wall. Here's a picture of the existing facility. So, this is Singular Wireless's existing equipment shelter. The proposed Verizon shelter would be nearly identical to this, and it'd be to the right in this photo of that existing shelter.
So, the right to co-locate brings with it the right to build another structure, necessarily, or is this discretionary?
Mr., Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips, I'm not sure I understand the question. The definition for co-location is to co-locate on any existing tower support structure or other structure, so the antennas themselves are being mounted on the building.
I understand that, but do you get to bring a new building with you?
If that's, that's the proposed project, and there are no specific requirements as far as what's not allowed, so they are allowed to propose new equipment.
So theoretically, other carriers that co-locate can also bring a building?
Correct.
In the future?
Correct.
So, it's not going to stop. There will be more and more buildings somewhere on this property. So, it's about that size, you say, and right next to it in that little grassy area?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that a private home? What are we seeing just a bit of under the cypress tree?
Madam Chair, yes, that's the existing home on Santa Angela Lane.
Does the fence that I see to the right of the small building, is that, does that fence go with the private property where the car is? Or is that some other building back there? To the right, to the right of the Verizon building?
Oh, this is the existing perimeter wall of the Verizon facility.
Okay, it is a wall, okay.
So, that is, it's on their property, and then there's existing mature vegetation on the other side of it that would serve to screen the proposed equipment shelter. I can show you a view from, this is the street, this is from Santa Angela Lane, looking on the other side of that wall.
Madam Chair, has there been any notice to the property owners about this, of this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips, yes, the project has been noticed as part of the application completeness and also this part, this hearing.
All right, any other questions in regard to the staff report? Commissioner Idelson, please.
Okay, when I'm looking at this fold-out part, which, do you have a slide on that? It shows, let's see, I'm seeing that building, the equipment, I don't know what page I have, C1.
If you look at sheet number A1 of that, it's very clear where the new building is being proposed, as opposed to the old building, you know. From what I, you know, I think from a philosophical point of view, I mean, all of it is screened, you know, and I think that it is, that in the future, we can expect to see some further development of this particular site. You know, it is the only site in Montecito where we've got kind of a hub of activity, Verizon, Singular, whoever else, you know, and there's room on, you know, I mean, if there were to be another carrier come in and they needed another little building to do their thing, well, there's plenty of room here. You know, and as a community, we have demands that we have cell service, and, you know, whether it's Verizon, Singular, or whoever those, the other people were, this seems to be, it's, this site is going to get impacted in the future. And, I think, as a community, we just kind of go, well, wait a second, it's got to go somewhere. This is a really good site. It's very contained, you know, it's like attached to the commercial district. It doesn't, it doesn't cause anybody any inconvenience. The neighbors, I know when we, when Verizon, I don't know if it was Verizon, when they came in and they put that whole sheet on the outside of the building a few years ago of antenn, like, you can see it on the pictures, you know, it, the community isn't upset about this. You know, certainly not as upset as they were the last time we dealt with a cell company. So, for me, I don't have any problem with this project at all, and would like to move it forward if there's no other continued discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Idelson, please.
I still have a concern. I understand, and I agree with my colleague, that high density there is going to happen, more facilities. What I want to know is the kind of screening that we can expect, not only out of this one, because it is a prefab, what, 11 feet 4 inches by 16 feet, equipment shelter, that the screening is adequate, as well as it will be for several others, assuming others are coming in.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Idelson, I believe the existing screening is sufficient for the proposed project, as well as future projects, as the mature vegetation that exists on the property exceeds the height of the proposed shelter quite a bit, especially on this side of the property.
Any other questions?
Just briefly, the, we pray that the testing is correct. We have a preschool across the street.
We sure do.
And, let me ask you this, is there a cumulative effect of three carriers producing more emission as opposed to one, or do they stand separately? Is there, I can say this better, do you mean, you know what I mean? I can restate it, if you want.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips?
Does this affect the total emission output of the additional?
My best knowledge of that is definitely carriers operate in different bandwidths, especially in, depending on the service they are providing, whether it's cellular, LTE data. There are different bandwidths and different frequencies assigned to them in their licenses. However, the addition of facilities next to each other could potentially have a cumulative effect, and that's why the FCC standards actually require that emissions levels, or the standards are a cumulative assessment of all emissions contributing in those cellular bandwidths. So, that is, the FCC standard is a cumulative measurement, and it's supposed to be a 24-hour, 365 days a year measurement that it needs to meet those standards.
So, the 9.5 brings in cellular's emission? Or is it just the standalone, is it the 9.5% of the FCC public emission standard, is that just for Verizon, projected?
Commissioner Phillips, that's a cumulative projection.
It includes the other emission from that site?
Correct. That includes both the existing Singular antennas, as well as proposed Verizon antennas.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to the applicant, I would like to say, if you would like to have public comment on this, please fill out a speaker slip, and we will get to that later. We'll now move to the applicant.
John Archer.
Sir, we want to hear from the applicant first, and then we will go to public comment. Thank you, I didn't make that clear. Sir, please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm Jay Higgins. I'm here today representing Verizon Wireless. First, thanks to staff for working with us. We were deemed complete shortly after our submittal, and we're grateful they found us a spot on an agenda for you fairly quickly. It's true that we are operating under a compressed timeframe on this particular project due to a site coming off the air up at the QAD building. So, if we don't find a replacement, excuse me, and have a site built by the end of the summer, there will be a service outage in Montecito. The affected areas will be along Highway 101 in between Sheffield and Cabrillo, in the Upper Village, parts of Coast Village Road, and into the foothills, and we believe these areas, these are areas that are prone to fire emergency, ought not to be without wireless service for any amount of time. We did bring the project to the Montecito Association a couple of weeks ago. They appeared supportive, especially as it relates to us replacing one site with a new one. So, you're right, the location here is ideal, and it's something that is consistent with your code, and we find it in many agencies, California, especially coastal California cities that we operate in, all of the ordinance that we see that are coming out in the last 10 years and recently, all sort of do the 10 years and recently, all sort of do the same thing. They encourage facilities to be on commercial buildings, as opposed to monopoles such as the QAD facility. I don't think you'd, Santa Barbara County certainly wouldn't approve that in, these days, and many other California communities would not either. It's also a co-location. That's another similar policy we see in a lot of coastal California cities, where there's a site that's already operating for, under good land use policy, the, the community would like to see that be co-located on. And with regard to Commissioner Phillips' question, the co-location, and Ms. Lowry elaborated on this, is typically referred to in terms of the structure that the antennas are on, and doesn't necessarily relate to the radio equipment and computer equipment that, that allows the different carriers to operate in different bandwidths. So we could not use Singular's radio equipment because we would then be within their, their bandwidth. So we wouldn't, that wouldn't, that would be, that would just be too much sharing. We would like to offer a different service and a different bandwidth, and that's just a different company's ability to provide a different level of service and competition for the community. So that equipment and radio gear goes in, inside the prefab shelter, comes off a truck, already stuffed with, with everything, and if you look at the parking lot, it's, there's a lot of room back there, and another carrier coming to you would necessarily need to locate their equipment that, in a, in a way that didn't encroach into the setbacks, maybe didn't take out any vegetation or trees like, like we are not doing, didn't take out any parking, and was screened. And in relation, as it relates to the antenna location, I'm going to point to something, and then I'll be right back to the microphone.
Please.
That rectangular shape on the roof plan is the existing parapet up on the roof. And should another carrier come to locate equipment at this particular property, they'd have to jump through a number of hoops, one of which is, can they afford to negotiate with the property owner, the building owner? Do they find it suitable in relation to whether other sites are in Montecito? That's a big question. Does it work for an engineering standpoint? And can they design something that is wholly contained within the existing building or parapet? My personal opinion is if another carrier came, they would probably need to move their antennas away from the Verizon and Singular antennas, from an interference standpoint, and so that they would then have to come before you to either put up another structure on the roof or additional parapets, and that would be something that would be subject to the BAR. In our case, we are not making any physical changes to the building, completely hiding the antennas behind existing parapets, and I don't think you'll, you'll find that's a reality for another carrier. As to the location, again, it is an ideal site for the community because it's generally located in the middle of Montecito as opposed to the QAD facility that's off to the side. Montecito is a difficult area to cover because of the terrain and tree cover, so bringing a site that's closer into where the demand is, is ideally, especially for those residents and businesses in the Upper Village. Again, the design is essentially invisible, and the equipment shelter won't be seen because of the height of the existing block wall and the mature vegetation back there. You know, nationwide, we see in the industry the trend that households are going completely wireless. They're ditching their landline services, and right now, that's at about 30%. I don't know what the number is for Santa Barbara County, but nationally, we can assume that there's a similar trend here. And most families are doing that because of cost. But really, the bottom line is, people are making that switch because the landline handset just doesn't compete with the wireless handset. You have a wireless handset that comes with 4G data services, and the internet capability of your home computer these days with 4G, and that is something that Verizon will deploy here. So it's, it's not even a question of competition anymore. And this relocation, because it's coming closer into where the customers are, will not only improve coverage, it'll hopefully allow more households the option to cancel their landline phone service, and that's a big cost savings for folks. So in summary, we'd urge you here today to, in light of the fact that we're removing a facility that was developed over 20 years ago on a very prominent hilltop in a very unstealth manner, and we're moving that facility to a commercial building and incorporating a design that will render it essentially invisible to the community, there are no visual or architectural impacts, and because the facility will be closer to its customers, it will, the service will improve. We're consistent with your ordinance, and we have the support of staff, and this facility is obviously going to be used and needed in case of fire emergencies, especially by service personnel, and that really concludes my comments. I can answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions for Mr. Higgins? Commissioner Idelson, please.
Yes, will you have an outage between the time that you demolish existing structure and have this one put up?
In a night, Commissioner Idelson, in an ideal world, we would receive approvals from the commission here today and be in, into the building department for plan check, and then build the site in the summer, and we would not have a gap. But as you know, we are subject to an appeal, and we certainly hope that we could get through the process without having a gap, but it depends on whether or not we're appealed, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Questions for staff? Yes?
Ms. Lowry?
I have a question, yeah. Do we need to find that the applicant has a necessity to co-locate? Because I'm not sure they do. Is it incumbent upon us to make that finding that since they have to, since the site is no longer viable, the co-location's appropriate, it sounds like this is just a better site, and is that all they need to show, and is that all we need to worry about? Shall I ask the applicant?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips, I'm not sure I understand the question.
What is the, what is the obligation the applicant needs to establish to co-, to reco-locate, to co-locate? Is it simply we want to? It's there, and we want to. Is that all they need?
Correct.
Because it's not a lease issue, then. This is just a better site for them, is that it?
Yeah, why are they moving?
The previous, so, as, in regards to the co-location, yes, they are choosing to co-locate in this option.
And that's all we need to know?
Correct.
Okay.
There are, I'll add to that, in the telecommunications ordinance, there are development standards that encourage co-location, and in part of our review process, there are options of whether or not co-location is feasible or infeasible. In this instance, it is feasible. Where others, it is infeasible, we do go through that process in determining that, and this application, they've chosen to, it's feasible, and it's a good design that works with the development standards.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Higgins, did you, would you like to say something?
Madam Chair, if I may, to Commissioner Phillips' point, we have spent, we knew this was coming with the decommissioning of the QAD site for some time, and so we've been working with engineering teams and real estate teams in the area for some time to locate other suitable candidates, and we just cannot. Not all property owners want this, not all properties have room, not all the properties make sense from an engineering standpoint. So this is an ideal candidate with or without Singular up on the roof.
All right, thank you. Any further questions for the commission? At this time, I would like to ask for site visits. Have, would we please disclose site visits? Commissioner Gostainer? Did you visit the site?
I'm very familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Phillips?
I am as well. We looked at this in 2002 and looked, had a closer look then, but I'm aware of where it is.
And I'm familiar with the site.
And I am as well. At this time, we will go to public comment, and we have one. Dan?
Don.
Don?
Yeah.
Please. How are you? Please take, go to the microphone, to the podium.
In one month, it'll be 50 years since I moved to Montecito, before most of you were born.
We wish.
And I live just up the street, three doors, three houses up from the location here. So I'm concerned about radiation power levels. In fact, when I'm lying in bed, I look out my balcony window, and I see the rooftop. So I spend about a third of my life in bed, so it's important for cumulative radiation. Now, I have a lot of background in this area of microwave radiation. I graduated from MIT with a degree in electrical engineering, and I worked for 40 years designing microwave antennas. And while I was at Raytheon in, in Galida, I was in charge of radiation safety, and no one was permitted to turn on a transmitter until they submitted a report that guaranteed that at no location where humans could be would the level exceed the 10 milliwatts per square centimeter. So I would like to see such calculations for this site. Now, I'm, at my bed, I'm about 400 feet from that rooftop, but there are locations a lot closer. Down the street, there are families with small children that would be exposed at much higher levels than I would see at my house. In fact, in that preschool you talked about across the street, you could be as close as 100 feet, which would give you 16 times the intensity of radiation as I would see at my house. So that's what I'm really concerned about. We have one of the mothers here of some of these small children down the street, and I just hate to see them exposed for any length of time to this high level of radiation. So if possible, I'd like to see calculations from the Verizon people about what their intensity level is, and, and maybe have them submit a similar report that I used to get at Raytheon from people who did the transmission.
Thank you. I think we, yes, please, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's, that's, well, that's all of my comments. It's just, I'm much more concerned about all these little kids, especially across the street at that preschool. They could get pretty intense levels, or at least much higher than I see at my place, but I'd like to see their analysis to show what their levels are.
Thank you. Commissioner Idelson has some question, I think. Commissioner Phillips, I'm sorry.
Thank you. We appreciate your testimony, and your background is helpful. Are you comforted at all that the finding is that accumulative emission is 9.5% of the permissible? So let's assume that's wrong by 10%. We're still in a comfortable range, wouldn't you say? I mean, shouldn't I be comforted by that number?
Well, I'd like to see the analysis.
Is there something that we're missing? Is the, is the?
It's a cumulative effect, yes.
So it's 9.5% of federal permissible levels. That's, that's well within a comfort range, I would think.
At what distance?
At what distance, indeed. I don't know that.
Yeah, I'd like to see where, I'd like to see the calculations.
Maybe the applicant has that number for us. And can you stand by, because I don't understand what he's saying probably, and I might ask you for your input. Thank you.
Yes. If you would just stand to the side for just a moment, and we'll get an answer to this question. Is that okay? And then move on to yours?
No, I'm actually pointing, I just wanted to point out that in our staff report, it is really clear that staff has said, as part of the permit application, the applicant has provided a radio frequency emissions report prepared by Hammett and Edison dated May 2, 2012. So this, this information that you're saying that you want to see, you know, you, you want to go over there and talk to, I'm sorry.
Ms. Lowry.
Yeah, because, because she, this, this information would not, was brought to this commission as part of the whole project. So we do have that information, and staff has reviewed that information and found that it complies with the FCC things, whatever, emission standards. So we know that already. We, we, going, according to what staff is telling us, this commission, we already know that, you know. So is there something that you can provide this speaker that, so that he understands that all of this work was done prior to it coming to the commission?
If the speaker has questions, then it may be that some in our audience do as well, and Mr. Higgins is here. Would you like to address the question before us, please?
Wait, would you say that again?
Mr. Higgins is here from Verizon, and he can address some of your concerns. So if you would like to step aside for just a moment, then maybe we can continue with your other questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Jay Higgins with Verizon Wireless. You know, I'm not an engineer, and anecdotally, I can tell you, though, that I've been in the business off and on for a number of years, and I have read a lot of the materials, and there's lots to read, and I try to keep current with it. None of the materials seem to satisfy anybody on either side of the argument, by the way. And I can tell you also that about two years ago, a facility went in by T-Mobile about 250 feet from my home, and I, right out my bedroom window, I see it every day. I have two kids in my house, and it doesn't bother me at all. And I have read all the materials, too. So in terms of the question, though, that was asked, in the RF study, safety study that we provide as a part of our application by Hammett and Edison, it appears on the, in the first paragraph of the study results, if Ms. Lowry can corroborate this, that what happens when a study is done is that the county says, if there's a, if there's a carrier there already, we want you to go out and take a measurement of what's there with a meter, and then, and then add to that the projected level of RF that's going to come from the, the new facility, and the electrical engineering crews all have good computer models that can predict that based on primarily how close the antenna is to the ground and also the kind of antenna. And so what they do is they project a maximum worst-case scenario, operating at, at full strength, which, by the way, in my, in my experience, is never the actual amount. So they'll always overestimate. But in this case, on one particular part of the, adjacent to the property, closest to where the antennas are, the maximum calculated emission would be .051 milliwatts, which I think is, is less than what the previous speaker referred to. Now, that, that signal strength dissipates exponentially as you move away from the antennas. So our exhibit that we provided, or our study, does have an exhibit in the back that also predicts around the property where, or what the levels is, are predicted to be around the property, and that, and at one point, up Santa Angela Lane, it's at its highest. Across the street at the preschool, it's about half that amount, and various other spots because of the, maybe terrain or distance from the antennas, and the existing parapet walls are, they're much less, much lower as well. So I'm happy to provide this and have a conversation with the speaker afterward. We can work with him and, and maybe do further testing if he would like. I know that the county will require us to go back out post-construction and take a meter and actually measure the actual emissions, and I won't bet any body parts on it, but I can almost guarantee that it'll be much lower than what we're, we're stating here, which is, by the engineer's words, overstated.
Mr. Higgins, have you met with the school across the street?
No, I, we have not met with, with the school.
All right, thank you. Sir, did you have any further questions or comments?
No.
All right. Thank you so much. We also have a, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Russell, please. All right. We have a request from Denise Alec to speak, please. Please state your name for the record.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Phillips, county staff, my name is Denise Alec, and I represent the owner of the building at 559 Santa Cedro, which we were noticed on, on this request. this request. And also for Mr. Higgins, my request is really, that building is, the existing building, my understanding is not habited at the moment, not being utilized, decommissioned by its previous use. And I am wondering why that facility, the existing facility can't be used instead of erecting another structure? Even though it's only 192 square feet, there's already a building in place and I'd like to know why that can't be utilized.
All right. Any further comments on that? If not, we'll ask the county, please, to respond to the question.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, I'll answer that question to the best of my ability and then have the applicant respond if I'm missing something. My understanding of, usually is for access and maintenance of the site, they like to have an equipment shelter that they can access and have their equipment in and get to in the event of outage or any needed repairs. And also for protection and liability of their workers. But I'll have the applicant address any other concerns regarding having their own shelter.
Mr. Higgins, please.
Madam Chair, Jay Higgins, to the question of the speaker, it's Verizon landline and it really bears no relation to Verizon Wireless, they're two completely different companies. And the, the facility ends, that's, or the equipment that's inside the building is not in fact being decommissioned. That's actually being outfitted with fiber so that all of the phone lines and the traditional landline, the landline services to homes in Montecito will have a fiber connection. So while there's not as much use inside that building as there once, once was, and while there's not as many employees at the site, it is in fact still being used. And Ms. Lowry answered the question correctly, it's really a question of maintenance. Verizon Wireless will get a key to open the gate and they can go inside the shelter and manipulate the equipment, the radio equipment specific to the cellular facility. But they don't need to go inside the actual landline telephone company's building and do anything, so that access isn't provided. And, and to the extent that they need to get up on the roof to look at the antennas, they can arrange for that access, but that's, that would be extremely rare that once installed, a Verizon technician, wireless technician would have to get up onto the roof.
Are there any other public comments or questions? We have one more speaker? Martha Kay, please.
Hello, my name is Martha Kay. I grew up on San Angelo Lane a few years ago. As a 12-year-old, we moved there. I was in attendance in 2002 when this came before your commission. And I couldn't remember if it had been eight years ago or 10 years ago. Things are not as clear as they were back then. But I'm, I'm hearing that, that this is an ideal site, according to Mr. Higgins, who represents Verizon. And I, I have some, I've taken a couple of notes here and I'm wondering a little bit about the fact that Singular already has this equipment building there on the site. And if they indeed, this is a question, are, that hopefully will be able to be answered, if they have use of the antennas that have been on the building and if these are indeed wireless antennas with Singular, we're talking about a landline Verizon, it sounds like, already in place there. And it seems to me that the emergency that came up at the CAD site for wireless should not really drive the relocation of this, this, this new occupant or, or usage of the building on San Angelo Lane. And I have another question regarding the successful rejection of the idea of a wireless facility near the Montecito YMCA and Montecito Union School on San Ysidro Road not that long ago. If this was a Verizon request, possibly members of the commission could let me know that, or if, if indeed you're, you're aware of, of that most recent. Excuse me, I didn't plan to speak, so I'm, I'm kind of, I had these questions in my mind.
You're doing fine.
But I also have, our family has our, our old house for, that is a rental now and has been a rental on San Ysidro for many years after my mother died. And the family that presently rents that house has three small, has two small children and one young man who's ready to go on to middle school. And there are more children on San Angelo Lane now than there were 10 years ago when this came before you. I also go to the church down at the bottom of the street and I tried to contact the director of the preschool to ask if she was aware, she wasn't on board 10 years ago with the same job that she has now as director. And I wasn't able to hear back from her, so that was why I attended today, to see if I could find out more information. But after Mr. Higgins' comments about the position of the parapet where the, the antennas are, are behind this concrete parapet, is how I'm interpreting it, it sounds like the residents of Santa Angela are really in more direct line to these radio waves than the kids across the street. And I have, you know, a concern for anyone, whether they're children or adults, but I especially have, and the fact that I've grown to, to love and know the family that's been in residence there at the house for more than two years now, I, I respect their, their concerns as well for what, what we're about. They were not in Santa Barbara at that time and don't have some of the history behind some of this. So I, I wonder if, if you, if my questions are clear regarding the reasoning behind this being such an ideal site, just because it's there? And whether Verizon has, has truly looked anywhere else in the area that's not so close to, to large numbers of children? And were they indeed the group that we're looking to, to locate on San Ysidro Road at the, the cross-section there where the YMCA and Montecito Union School are? Thank you for listening and I do hope that this still has more time to be contemplated by the community, because just the fact that there aren't a whole lot of us here right now, I don't think represents the idea that we're, we think this is such a great idea, which we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. You raised a number of questions and I will ask the county, in regard to the proposal to locate something, and I, sorry, I don't remember, near Montecito Union and the YMCA, could you please tell us the status on that? It was three years ago, four years ago?
Madam Chair, I believe the project that you're referencing is the NextG Distributed Antenna System.
Yes, that's right.
Project. They had proposed a site on a utility pole near the YMCA on San Ysidro Road. And then during a series of hearings for that and other sites in Montecito, they withdrew that particular application. And voluntarily, in addition to the one on, I think, Schoolhouse Road was the other referenced one. Those were voluntary withdrawals that the App, NextG network. So NextG is actually not a carrier, they build the infrastructure for carriers. And in that particular scenario, those two sites were applications for MetroPCS.
All right, thank you so much.
Ms. Chair, the public should know that the withdrawal by NextG was not the result of emissions being too strong for that location. It was a, it was a decision to avoid more discussion, it seemed to me. And, so I think it's important that that not be inferred.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Higgins, would you like to address some of the concerns that Ms. Kay had during her comment period?
Madam Chair, Jay Higgins with Verizon Wireless, if I can remember them, I, I guess what stood out was, was the rationale behind this site as it relates to the QAD property.
Could you repeat?
Let me be clear, an ideal site would be a 100-foot monopole right in the middle of that intersection. That would be great for Verizon Wireless. So, when I, when we say ideal, this is not ideal, but I, my opinion as a land use planner, knowing how California agencies work with the industry, from a siding and design and architectural standpoint, this appears to be an ideal location. I think that the county is, is going to have a hard time, if you will, making findings that this is a facility that could be supported by a denial in, in that there are no physical effects, in terms of visual effect. And I don't know how else you're allowed to regulate this but for those impacts. Now, I've been in the business for a long time and sometimes physical effects don't matter. And so I'd, I'd ask you to make a decision based on staff's recommendation today and, and hold us accountable to reach out to those that are concerned and go to the school, if you'd like us to do that, to have a meeting. And it's, it's going to be a requirement, I sense, regardless of your decision here, that we are going to be involved in further conversations with the neighborhood and perhaps the school, and anybody that wants. And so, my phone number's in the record and I'm happy to do a community meeting after this at any time. And we, we want to make it clear though, that, that we're operating not in a proposal to simply improve people's ability to get the internet on the phone. This is actually a serious issue with a carrier that's been in business longer than anybody else, with the most amount of customers, with the most amount to lose in case of emergency. And Verizon Wireless is, has a good relationship with the county based on our doing business here and these forums and, and in terms of providing emergency cellular facilities when the landline systems go out. So they're invested and personally, I'm invested, I've been here in the community practicing for a long time. And so I'm, I'm certainly willing to provide additional forums and materials to, to the extent we can, get people comfortable with, with what's happening here.
Mr. Phillips, please.
Thank you. Indeed, our, our jurisdiction is aesthetic, I suppose, and we're preempted by federal law, looking too hard into the science. But as you reach out to the community, if you could do a good job on the science level, I think a lot of people would be more comfortable. The emission issue.
Commissioner Edelson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. You've, you provided exactly the dialogue I wanted.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
And I agree with Commissioner Phillips on this. So we do need more community outreach and I would urge the community to get involved, to become informed. Commissioner Gostinger, please. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll bring it back to the, is there any other public comment? And we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. Commissioner Gostinger, please.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to make the required, the, the motion to support staff's recommendation to make the required findings for approval for the project, including CEQA findings, determine the project is exempt from the provisions of CEQA and approve the project 12CUP string 000007, subject to the conditions of approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. It was unanimous. Thank you to the community for being here, stay involved, we like that. It's a good thing for Montecito. Thank you all for coming. If there's no more visits before the commission, we are adjourned.